We call the meeting to order with the budget released.
To the play of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
We, our clerk is going to be a little late. I haven't heard from her yet to see if, what time she'll be here, but in her absence, we do need someone to take that role until our clerk is in attendance. So I'd be happy to entertain any motions to nominate someone as a temporary clerk for this meeting.
I'll nominate myself, do the best I can.
Support. Motion by Bills, support by Smith to nominate trustee Bills as temporary clerk until our clerk arrives. Yes, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you again for being willing. Hopefully she gets here in the next five or 10 minutes, right?
I'm gonna do roll call then, right?
And that's right up. Roll call, please, of the board.
Trustee Thering?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
I'm here. Supervisor Milky?
Here.
Alright.
And just for the record, Jeff Brown is on vacation, excused. Kim Rice, our treasurer, is out ill and currently in ER, so prayers and support for her. And, as mentioned, our clerk, Cody, hopefully is here in the next few minutes.
Okay.
We have agenda in front of us. You've all looked at it, I'm sure. Be happy to entertain any motions regarding the agenda.
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion by Thering, support by Bills. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Agenda approves unanimously. That brings us to presentations. I know we have one elected official here, Commissioner Angler. You have the floor if you'd like to take a moment?
Yeah, thanks. I know, this Bills was at our meeting the other night, so I won't go too much in there, but one thing I do want to mention about the meeting last night, it was I was pleasantly surprised that at the beginning of the year, we always try to fill out our committee appointments and everything, and you know how hard that is, and sometimes it's always hard, but we had like six or seven positions, different committees we needed to fill, and every one of them, except for one, had at least two candidates, and some of them had three, and it's the first time I've seen that. And it actually was kinda hard, a couple of them, because like with the Buildings Board of Appeals, they had two candidates, one was an incumbent, but between the two of them, they had 72 years of experience. So we had some really good, it's the first time I've been on the board that we've had this, and I'm happy to see that people are getting more involved in it. So that's, you know, I was happy to see that. I think I mentioned to you before, sometimes I talk to a lot of groups, I forget if I told you, we were talking about the depreciation schedule for the windmills, and I brought that up, so that was a big deal. Kinda got a little bit, thrown a little bit of a curveball with our, a couple of years ago, state required that we had, we do a puppet, their defenders are a Michigan Indian Defense Council Agreement, and we had certain standards we had to met while we formed a committee, and after a while, we came up with a system, and right away, you had to have four standards, and there's gonna be eight standards, all, eventually they're gonna, you're gonna implement. Well, we decided to actually, to kinda do everything at once, and plan forward with this, so we actually had one through four, which was in compliance. We actually had number five, which was a requirement last year. Well, then they came out and said, well, we're gonna skip six and seven, we're gonna, you have to have eight. And eight had to do with salaries, and, and as you know, how hard it is getting people, and we've been shifting people around and everything. It's gonna cost the state a lot of money, we have to use the Attorney General's comparisons on that right now, so, plus it also, because we want it, get it in play now, so when we do the grant, we wanna have that all in place, because we've been very lucky, we've been getting everything we wanted through our grant process, and so, the problem is, and now it puts it out of kilter with the prosecutor's office, which, so, it's, yeah, it's kind of a mess, and we were kinda caught off air, but we went ahead and raised it to get that standard complied in this budget, so we had to make a little budget amendment to that, because it will affect how we apply for the grant for next year's budget, which is over a million dollars, so. I won't take any more of your time. If you have any questions, I'll take them, if not, I will, I will move on.
Thank you.
I just would like to make a comment. I so appreciate you being here as often as you are and addressing this board. It's really helpful to me, I'm sure it is to the others as well. So I'm grateful that you're here.
I was down the road the other night, at Lux's, and I came by and the lights were all off here, which is kinda glad, because the roads are kinda nasty.
Yeah, thank you. Moving on, we have no public hearings, item six on the agenda, so that takes us to item seven, public comment. Public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. Do we have anybody remote?
I have Jennifer Hedges, but she, I believe she's here for a different reason.
Okay, I guess if she raises her hand, let me know. And she knows how to raise her hand if need be. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record, and with that, we'll open up public comment at 7:06 PM. Seeing no one jumping forward, making sure Jennifer's not raising her hand. So no public comment given, so we'll close public comment at 7:06 PM. That brings us to item eight on our agenda, closed session, there's none that I'm aware of. Of course, the board at any time can choose to do so, but I'm pausing briefly. Moving on, item nine on the agenda, report boards and comments, current list of boards and commissions, appointments as needed. First order business, I think, we have a new trustee with us, so welcome.
Thank you.
Trustee Smith and I had a conversation after your swearing in with the clerk, and the clerk was actually involved in that conversation as well. And if you remember, when trustee Houck left this board, Lisa, I'm sorry, clerk Cody, see, I use those first names sometimes by accident, clerk Cody was put onto the road commission, so she was serving as a liaison to two different roles. And in that conversation, coming out of that conversation, I should say, I would recommend that we appoint trustee Smith to intergovernmental, and then Lisa will stay on the road commission.
Yes.
So, happy to entertain a motion for that, if, I'm just letting you know the conversation that took place, and...
And I think it would be great if...
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint trustee Smith as the liaison to the...
Intergovernmental.
Intergovernmental and the road commission.
Not the road commission.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Lisa's gonna stay on the road.
Oh, Lisa, okay.
I'm sorry, clerk Cody.
I'd be just on the, and you're on the liaison.
Yes, so you'd be serving with me.
So it'd be both of us on there.
Okay. That's my motion, striking the road.
Aye, support then. Support.
Motion by Thering, support by Bills. Any other discussion?
Do I have to write that down, Tara?
If you'd like to, so we have double notes, but I'm...
Yeah.
I guess I wanna just confirm with trustee Smith that I didn't mischaracterize our conversation.
No, no, that was right on.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to appoint trustee Smith to the intergovernmental committee, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. We do have, as mentioned in previous meetings, we have two spots open on the EDA, that have been open, I should say. Two of our incumbents have applied, their term is up in the middle of April, so I would anticipate, based on practice of this board, that at our next meeting, we would like to address those two spots. But I guess, if you're not aware, Cheryl Hunter, who serves on the EDA board, long-term member, her term is up in June, but because of her travel, she's not been able to attend at the level she would like lately, and has submitted a resignation. It was actually a wonderful letter, now, maybe I should send that out and share it with the board. She enjoyed serving, served well, she's just, her schedule doesn't allow her to be there. So we actually have a third spot, so what I'm saying is, we all need to be hunting to fill that third spot on the EDA.
Sounds good.
And I'm not aware of any other issues on our boards and commissions at this point, so unless there's objection, we'll move on. Board member reports. I'm looking at our temporary clerk, trust, temporary clerk Bills.
Yeah, I attended the meeting last night, and I did not get the pizza, the free pizza, because I had to return a truck, so, anyway, but it was a great meeting, and they did do a lot of appointments, and seemed to be a lot of good candidates. There was a presentation by Sue Ann Kupfermeyer, and regarding the recent projects at Majest- Majeski Landing and Deerfield Park canoe launch, and they also have a new Discover Chippewa River Flyer, and I don't know just where to get that, but it's pretty cool, and you know, this Chippewa watershed usually has a booth at the farmer's market, so I'm sure these will be coming out. But it's really cool, and the presentation was great, and we've all seen the, I think we've all seen the pictures. It's awesome, so. And, did she retire?
She retired. That was actually, she was coming in for the meeting, but she already gave her last day, and so...
Wow. So that's sad.
You mind if I, what kind of, there's also a new reservation system for the park system?
Yeah, we knew about that.
Okay. And of course, you know, the bridge is gonna be closed, so anybody following that map, you might wanna consider, because some of those will not be open.
Did she say that was at Vernon Road, or what road?
They haven't gave a date, Vandy Car, it'd be the Vandy Car.
Oh, Vandy Car, okay.
Vandy Car's grid, so if you're, you'll be able to know most of the way down the river, but some areas you will not, well, I'm not sure if you'd be able to portage, because they'll have other equipment there.
Oh.
If you could do, you'll have to go, you'll have to go, I'm afraid, but anyways, I wanted to bring that up, because, in case you're planning a trip, you might wanna check that out, so.
Yeah. So that's sad, because she's really cool, and she's been the director for a long time. They're starting to pay for some of the stuff, for the construction of the jail, but they haven't seen any bricks yet, so, but they, and they approved the inspection service agreement for the, for the construction, correct, or for, for the trial, or, anyway, an inspection service to, oh, yeah, well, here it is, I'm sorry, professional services industry, so they can test all the stuff that goes into the jail, so make sure that's exactly what they wanted. Other than that, you know, they did the appointments, and that's about it.
Fantastic.
Yep.
Nothing from the new guy.
Next time.
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
The planning commission decided to take action into reviewing the master plan, so we'll have more to talk about as time goes by.
That's awesome. I, you know, one of the things that we put money in the budget for this year, and this kinda informational too, for our new trustee, is for survey. So ideally, planning commission, at some point, will be able to dovetail into some of that data, and/or maybe building some of the questions that the survey has, because I'm sure both our public works and our planning commission and this board all have questions we'd like to hear from the public on. So, thank you. Quickly, board review, met with our organizational meeting Tuesday, yesterday. Wow, it seems like a week ago. My apologies. We met yesterday for about an hour. Organizational is just getting ready for the, the public meetings, and so this is partly public service announcement as well. The public hearings for, basically challenging your assessments, will be held here at Township Hall, Monday from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and then again on Thursday next week, from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM. So that'll be next week. Note, our manager and myself and Mr. Nanny, I believe, were the three attendants at the 2% roundtable from Township. And I thought it was a great meeting. They did a little bit different format than they had before. Typically, in the past, they would have a sign on a table, and it would say education, or infrastructure, or, and so you would just choose tables to go to, to talk about those topics, and this time, it was a little more, little more free form, in a way. Topics were kinda brought up at, more ad hoc. Is that a reasonable description? But it still was a great, great event. I learned a lot, and I think what comes, for me personally, what comes the most out of that, as far as what I gained from it, is hearing from all the other community members that we don't often interact with. That includes the Village of Shepherd, and townships that are, you know, 10 miles away from here. We don't communicate a lot with them, and it's an opportunity to hear from those individuals and the broader community. And last but not least, did receive an email from, forgive me, I don't have her name in front of me, I believe her last name was Baker, and if I mess that up, my apologies. She is involved somehow with the Mount Pleasant Housing Commission, looking at a tiny house community of some sort. I don't know many of the details at this point, other than I plan on responding to her tomorrow, and being agree, willing to meet with her, to see what they wanna talk about. My understanding is that she has met with our community and economic development director, so we'll see where that goes. Just, don't be surprised if sometime down the road, you hear more of this.
I also heard that there's more locations around, that are taking donation cans, that there are businesses and stuff for this as well. I've seen a few things, where some businesses are advertising that.
You've seen it, if, yeah, maybe you've all seen it in the paper too, right?
No. Donations.
They're like donations to help fund this tiny house campaign.
The intent is for, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
The intent is for helping with the homeless community, is my understanding.
And I think these homes are like 300, 400 square feet, if I remember correctly, and very small footprint, but you can get a lot in there, so as they transition from homeless to more stable housing, they kinda use this as a stopgap.
I thought ICRC did that stuff.
Yeah, and I don't know how that, what their relationship together is at all, so I'm anxious to kinda meet with her and see what she has to say, and, you know, there may come a point, based, I'm doing this based on public information that's been in the newspaper, that at some point, they have to have conversations with us, if this, this is the community they're looking at.
That's pretty small for zoning. I mean, I didn't, are we, we're putting that in our new, in our planning, right? Are we talking about that in plan, or do we have a zoning thing on small houses?
You know, I can't answer that right off the top of my head.
I don't, we, just talk about that briefly, right?
As I understand it now, yeah, we don't have that currently, right?
Okay. Oh, I thought we talked about it briefly, or something, anyway, but, yeah, okay.
I did, I brought it up a while ago because of, because this was in the paper, and I asked if it was part of our zoning. And the response, and correct me if I'm wrong, is it's currently not specifically part of our zoning.
That's correct.
Right. And that's what I have. That moves us to consent.
Let's give the clerk her job back. Can we do that?
Sure, you can have your job back.
Alright, thanks.
She was temporary clerk. Thank you, trustee Bills.
I appreciate that, sir.
Moving on to consent agenda, being that trustee Smith is brand new here to this board, and wasn't here for the meeting as a trustee last time, he and I had a conversation regarding whether or not he should be part of the vote to approve the minutes, and we felt it was just best to avoid it altogether, and so if we can...
We looked it up, and there's no clear definition on whether I should abstain or not on the minutes if I'm not on the board, so I'm just choosing to abstain on the approval of the minutes?
You don't have to.
I'm just going to, because I feel like, you know...
And I had no objection to that, so all I ask is that, consent agenda, unless there's somebody that needs to remove something else, that we remove the minute separately, so they can be voted on separately.
Fine.
But I'm happy to entertain motions regarding consent agenda.
A motion to approve the consent agenda, pulling item B out.
Approve, or support.
Motion by Cody, support by Bills. One quick comment, too, because of the no quorum at our last meeting, because of the weather, and I'm grateful that our staff and everybody was safe, we have two sets of counts payable that are in our packet for approval. Checks were written, so that we're not late on our bills, but just be clear, we're approving that two sets of payables. Any other discussion on consent agenda? Seeing, yes?
Do a roll call because of the brand contract.
Very good. So with that, no objections to a roll call vote here. Clerk Cody, would you get a roll call vote on the consent agenda approval minus item E, I'm sorry, minus, minus item B, the minutes?
Supervisor Milky?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
This is hard, because I'm used to doing it, and, trustee Thering?
Yes.
And clerk Cody, yes?
You can, yeah, he can go down, he votes on this.
It's on the consent agenda, right?
Minus the minutes.
Trustee Smith?
I would like to vote a yes.
You've had a long hit. Okay, we got this, alright.
Consent agenda, minus, minus the minutes, passes unanimously with that. Happy to entertain any motions regarding the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes.
Support.
Motion by Bills, support by Thering. Any discussion on the minutes? They look great as always, I thought.
Stellar.
All in favor to approve the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Any abstentions?
One.
Motion passes unanimously with the one abstention. That brings us to new business, item 11A on our agenda. This is regarding pump station five, over on the south end of the township. I do just wanna point out, as part of the upgrade, this pump station five, there is some language in there regarding a collection system investigation, which I'll let our manager describe, but I just wanna make sure you saw that. With that, manager, do you have anything you'd like to introduce on this?
Yes, thank you, and good evening, everyone. We're asking the board to consider approval of an engineering and construction services contract with Gordy Frazier, to help, help us through the project of upgrading pump station number five. That pump station's located on Concourse Drive. There is a component within that to help us develop a request for proposal to do some infiltration investigation. They typically use smoke and dye, but that, I just wanna make clear that this action tonight does not commit the board to conducting that investigation. What Gordy Frazier will help us do is develop the specs for that program, that specific program, and then go out for bid, and it'll be back, back before the board of trustees. But in the, in the larger action tonight, the contract amount is $69,500. The service area is along Concourse Drive, Meadow, Meadowlark Lane, Crawford Road, Bill Grail, I guess, South Crawford Road. Pump station in question was constructed in the 70s and 80s. We have been maintaining it over the years during some, and as you know, we televise our systems annually, and we found that the pipes and the manholes in that collection area are in good shape, but we did notice some, some larger than what we would normally anticipate in terms of flows. And we've buttoned down our piece of the infrastructure, pipes, manholes, so the next place to naturally look is the buildings and the grounds that are within that service area. We'll often find houses that are connected, there's some pumps, or there're roof drains, gutters are hooked into sewer systems often. roof drains, gutters are hooked into sewer systems often. So in the analysis stage, we, we've noticed some inflows that we can't account for. Hence the desire, should the board approve, to do a little bit more further investigation. Gordy Frazier would help in the development of that program. The larger programs relates to Pump Station Five, that project inclusive of this contract amount is estimated right now at five hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. It is part of the approved FY twenty-three budget. The upgrades would include wet well, access, waterproofing, electronics, dry, dry pit, piping valves, flow meters, electrical, SCADA system upgrades, in some cases replacements. And then there'd also be a capacity upgrade from a hundred and fifty gallons per minute to three hundred and fifty gallons per minute, per minute to, uh, help with future growth. Specific to the contract, those services include preliminary and final design, construction services, generation of bid documents, getting the bid, uh, documents out on the street, helping with review and analysis of those, uh, submittals, uh, construction administration, construction observations, and then project closeout, quality control and quality assurance aspects. So with that, um, again, the larger project, five hundred ninety-two thousand, within that is budgeted sixty-nine thousand five hundred for this contract to help with this larger project. So we're asking your approval tonight of just the Gordy Frazier component, so we can begin with the design work. That, be happy to answer any questions. We also have our, uh, Department Director, Ms. Kim Smith, and a representative from Gordy Frazier, Jennifer Hodges. And I apologize if I'm using an antiquated last name. Any questions for any of us?
Clerk Cody?
I live over there. Should I abstain?
No, you don't need to abstain. You're not receiving any
That's what I figured.
personal financial benefit from it.
Any questions? Sorry, do you have something? So regarding the investigation, um, what happens in the event that someone's tied, say their rain gutter into a drain into our sewer?
Well, it's in violation of our ordinance for one, so we could consider it illegal. And what we do is ask them to resolve that.
So essentially not put it in the sewer and drain it out into the yard?
Cut it off.
Right. I mean, remedies for most of these should not be traumatic as.
I don't want to say that.
Don't want to say that?
Might be somebody, sump pump that's wired in, so to speak, and that's underground and you might have to do some excavating or something, so I'm not going to say that.
Okay, that makes sense. I was, I was trying to, to fathom what the various scenarios might be, so that's helpful. Thank you.
Likely to be sump pumps, uh, other drainage that shouldn't be going into the sewer system. I do mention the gutters, downspouts, that's a common, it's a common thing.
And I'm, I'm glad to see the expansion, was it one fifty to three or three fifty?
Three fifty.
So my, my assumption is that just the town, what we expect as far as just normal flow, we want to see that expansion still. Regardless of.
The expansion is designed not to accommodate the illegal flow.
That's a very good answer. Thank you. Any other questions? My apologies.
And I'll just expand on that. Technically Eagle will not let you design the station to accommodate illegal flows.
Right.
So that is not what we are doing. We, the expansion is to service, um, vacant property that could develop into probably residential. We've had a couple, um, inquiries over the years and there's some property for sale out there. And the upgrade that we're looking at is the largest upgrade we can do for the footprint that we have in that location.
And, and I wasn't expecting that we were modeling it for unexpected flows. But I wanted to ask the question that we do see that need to upgrade. Cause that, that area from what I've seen, and I don't live there, but it, it could use it.
It could, and that station was built many years ago, prior to, um, the development on Bill, Bill Grail Drive and Meadowlark. We've done upgrades to pump sizes and, um, impeller sizes in order to accommodate some of the expansion that has happened over there over the years. But originally that pump station was only built to service Concourse Drive in a small section along Crawford Road. So with the upgrades we've done to the motor sizes and towers, pump sizes, we've been able to take that extra flow, but it's very difficult. That is actually the most critical station we have when we have a rain event. Is, that is the first station that our crew dispatches to with a generator. And they go over there and watch it because we know that we're going to see at least three times the flow that we do during, during normal operations.
To the east there, the CMU property kind of slopes towards Concourse area, doesn't it? A little bit? Kind of, it's been a while since I've been there, but I was remembering.
But there's a county drain that goes around Concourse too, doesn't it? So that would take some of the water, water from there as well. So this would, this would go for also your, the zoning is residential all in that area and that's what you're planning for? This doesn't pick up anything from CMU or anything in that area?
Those are in the city.
Those are all in the city, so that all covers this.
Any further questions?
I've got a kind of a side question. I know this doesn't necessarily pertain to tonight, but a, a smoke and dye, is that something you would start like in a sump pump and see if it comes out into the sewer system?
There will be a, a full program developed that'll require a lot of communication. It'll require entry into homes and so.
I see.
You put something in the house and you see if it comes out in there.
So if there's smoke coming out of the windows, here's a problem.
It's usually the gutters.
And I, and I think that's why I wanted to make sure we lifted that up too, that, and I'm glad our manager explained a lot of that because there's potential for some unhappy folks.
It, will this be too suspect or will you just pretty much just do everybody as a blanket? Or is that, the program has been developed?
Preliminary, I don't know.
Thank you.
But the fact that there's increased, when there's a rain event, that there's increased flow indicates what he was saying, you know, that it has to be coming from rainwater, some kind of runoff.
That area holds a lot of water when, when things get bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm glad to see the upgrade be proposed. And happy to entertain any motions if anybody's so moved.
I would like to make a motion to approve the engineering construct and construction services contract with Gordy Frazier for the upgrade of Pump Station Number Five located on Concourse Drive and service area infiltration study in the amount of sixty-nine thousand five hundred dollars and authorize the township, township manager to sign the contract.
Support.
Uh, motion by Thering, support by Smith. Any other discussion? I think we had quite a bit already. Hearing none? All in favor of the motion to approve the construction services contract with Gordy Frazier for sixty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Contract approval passes unanimously. That brings us to item eleven B on our agenda. This is a potential introduction and first reading of the stormwater management ordinance. This was on our agenda, I guess it was the last one, the last meeting. But I'll hand the floor over to our manager for any introductions you would like to have on this?
Thank you, and the paperwork for this begins on page forty-four of your agenda packet. We're asking the board to approve the, uh, could act the first reading of an updated stormwater management ordinance, which would repeal and replace the existing ordinance number nine, one nine nine two dash nine. And stormwater management is, as you can imagine, is, is a critical piece of protect, protecting the health, safety, welfare of the residents. Done properly, it can reduce risks to flooding. And the impacts that the flooding can have, can help reduce pollution. We have a existing ordinance that was adopted in nineteen ninety-two. Some of you may recall that, uh, some time ago, a number of years ago, there was a, a group put together, I believe it was the city, county and township, and worked on designing a ordinance that maybe all three entities could, uh, adopt. The county and the city, I think, adopted it pretty much, uh, as written at that time. The township, uh, has not, and this ordinance that we have in front of you tonight, it was developed with support from our engineer Gordy Frazier. It was also reviewed by our township attorney. It dovetails nicely with the county and the city ordinances that are currently on the books. This ordinance, um, you'll see changes as it relates to updated, um, state statutes that we need to be in alignment with. You'll see new definitions and additional terms being, uh, defined. I think it's, uh, as you can imagine, an ordinance that, that was properly written in nineteen ninety-two, maybe a bit out of date now. And stormwater management, while ultimately for a township, is a responsibility of the Drain Commissioner through the drains, the county drain office. We have a role of, uh, to play in that as well for properties that exist in the township and how that runoff is handled, whether it's coming from a roof or a parking lot or whatnot. So we feel this, uh, ordinance, as we've done with several over the last couple of years, kind of brings us up to current standards. Do have Mr. Nanny here to answer any technical questions you may have. Again, this is an introduction and first reading. If approved tonight, it'll be back before the board. At your next meeting for adoption. Thank you.
Any questions for our manager or Mr. Nanny?
I guess I'd like to point out something that I noticed in was a five point six appeals E. Goes from the, so if Gordy Frazier denies the application for some reason, then the next step of the appeals goes to the Community Economic Development Director for the final say. And then from there it goes to Circuit Court. I guess, I just feel a little uncomfortable with that, that there's no board and nothing against any staff here, please don't take that wrong. It's just that I'd hate to get into any protracted legal dispute. And so that is the one area that I have kind of some questions or like just a little unease about that. And I know the city has it going to a local Board of Appeals on that same one. And I just wonder why we chose not to have any appeals to go from the Community Development Director then to a board, whatever board may be designated, to hear that, because I think we hear every other appeal at a board level, whether it's zoning or planning commissioner, Board of Trustees. And I just wonder why this would be different than most of the others.
From our perspective, and as part of the recommendation that's contained in the wording that you see, there's a couple of things. One, this ordinance dovetails and is used with a lot of the land use regulations and processes and zoning. And for instance, site plan approval requires stormwater, uh, management aspects that will then need to follow this ordinance. So there's an opportunity through that whole process to work out some of the difficulties that may be encountered by, and some applicant that is subjected to this. So we feel there's a process there that will help and that can be utilized to resolve those differences. You mentioned the city. I'm not going to compare us to the city, good or bad, just because they do it, so I'm not going to speak to that, that aspect of it. And as, as important as any of that, I, it's written this way so that the issue does not come politicized. And, um, we think that having a local appeal board for something like stormwater management, that's also, that's already had a fairly lengthy process to resolve differences, why not just take it to court and see how we do?
Okay.
That's my response.
Okay, thank you.
I kind of agree with you though, Brian. I think that's kind of a, one guy gets to decide versus a group of people deciding. And I think you're, you got a good point there.
So I'm not saying I'm not in favor of this. That was just a question I had and just wanted to voice that concern that as we move forward on this, that, you know, I just wanted to bring it to the attention.
That aspect, however the board wants to proceed, uh, received a lot of internal attention.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm assuming what I heard from you, Trustee Smith, with regards to that, and so correct me if I'm misinterpreting why the question, right?
Right.
Is more, um, to make sure that there are the places in the process to allow, lack of better term, compromise or solution to happen instead of having to go to court.
Right. Yes.
That was your perspective on it?
Yes, yes.
So you're really looking out for the township?
Because I'm looking at like we, we are, or whatever board is usually the final stop. And I just wanted to know why this one would be different than if somebody had any other issues with zoning or anything else like that. So, but, uh, Mr. Still.
And many of the, many of the existing appeal boards, if somebody disagrees, whether it be the applicant or us, the court is the final.
Yeah, yeah.
And I may have missed something along the lines of describing these various checkpoints where, um, discussion resolution can occur. If I did, Mr. Nanny's can speak to that.
I appreciate your explanation.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Trustee Bill's comment in the sense that you want to make sure there's ample opportunity and, and hopefully characterized in your statement well, uh, for conflict resolution. But yeah, being on the planning commission and seeing stormwater management plans, being part of site plans, et cetera, et cetera. There is a lot of process that happens before that all comes to a stop and you end up in court.
Okay.
Would you agree, Trustee Thering?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I, I've seen that process as a planning commissioner, right? Yeah, that's right. You sat on the planning commission too, so there is a lot of opportunity there for things to get ironed out.
Most of the discussion really involves us, the, the Drain Commissioner coming forward and telling us what it is. So I, I don't recall us having any conversation contrary to what the Drain Commission has put forth.
And it, and that, that's a good point. You may recall, and it's been a little bit of time since I think I mentioned it, but in the old days, um, the Drain Commissioner in his office, um, reviewed the stormwater management plan component of a site plan to see that it, um, adhered to our ordinance and would then sign off on that. Yes, it did. No, it didn't. And there'd be the dialogue to finally get it to comply. That individual that has been doing that, um, is no longer with the county. And so we have then you, we're utilizing the services of our engineer to review these, these plans, since we no longer have the Drain Commissioner's office do it. And oh, by the way, we never had any sort of formal agreement that I'm aware of with the Drain Commissioner to conduct that review. So we were, we received notification. So we were, we received notification from the county that they would no longer be able to provide that service to us. So we entered into an agreement, I believe the Board of Trustees approved it, with the engineer to conduct this review. And I'm very comfortable with Gordy Frazier's ability to conduct these reviews. It's what they do. And so when you mentioned the Drain Commissioner, I wanted to make sure that was out there.
So typically in a, this is a question, I guess, for our Planning Commissioners and maybe our, our Planning Commissioners, the ones that have sat more recently than myself. We used to often approve site plans pending agency approval of X, Y, and Z. And sometimes that was one agency, sometimes it was three or four, and that would include sometimes stormwater management. The county that signed off in that case. I'm assuming from last understood from the Planning Commission now is approvals aren't given until all the ducks are in a row now, right?
We would give, I believe, an approval with provi- provision. I'm not saying the right word.
Conditions.
But is that right?
Conditions.
Conditions, thank you. Conditions.
So that does happen on occasion still where you'll prove it?
Yeah.
Pending a...
Trying to prevent them from having to come back.
Okay.
If it, if it, you know...
Maybe the Fire Marshal's not signed off on their aspect yet.
Right. If there, if Rodney and his staff, Mr. Nanny and his staff would see something that I think would be, that the board would need to see, then it's, it's coming back to us. And I think that would be headed off, we would just not approve it. I believe as a member of the Planning Commission, if there was something that Mr. Nanny and his staff thought, hey, you know, it's got to come back. It's, you know, I doubt the Planning Commission would go against that. Most, everything we come across is approval with conditions, which I think helps the applicant.
The frequency of taking something to the Planning Commission from the administration where we know it requires additional approvals, we frown upon that. I frown upon that. Therefore, the department doesn't do it very much. So it, it's rare. It's more rare than it used to be. It still occurs, but if it's not ripe for Planning Commission review, then it doesn't go before the Planning Commission.
Yeah, so I...
As a general rule now.
Speculatory to a certain degree, or if we were to have a site plan with a stormwater management that hasn't been finalized for whatever reason, that probably just wouldn't come before the Planning Commission at that point yet then, more than likely.
More than likely.
I mean, there would be cases, obviously, where we're trying to assist the applicant to move quick.
We won't take it unless it's something very minor, you know, almost ministerial. And we have internal approvals that have to occur. We, you know, we may not have water sewer approval yet, and that's, you know... We've had applicants want conditional approval and will get you those plans to review and approve later.
The whole reason for my questioning really was to make sure I understood the process because the concern was, are there ample opportunities to have corrections made to stormwater management if it's needed to avoid that legal liability? So I'm satisfied with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to introduce and conduct a first reading for the updated stormwater management ordinance, which would repeal and replace ordinance number one nine nine two dash nine.
Support.
Motion by Cody, support by Smith. Further discussion? All in favor of the first reading of the updated stormwater management ordinance replacing nineteen ninety-two dash nine? Roll call you want on this?
Sure.
You do? Roll call, please.
See if I don't mess it up this time, huh? Supervisor Milkie?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bills?
Yes.
Trustee Thering?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. All yeses.
All right, moving on on our new business. Item eleven C, CMU Pathway Connector Commitment of Funding. Mr. Stuldryer, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you. We're asking the board to approve a commitment to Central Michigan University for funding of up to three hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty cents to support construction of an eight-foot-wide asphalt pathway built to university standard, so there's lighting and security along the way from Deerfield Road north to Dennison Drive. This would complete a two-phase project. Phase one was completed several years ago. It went along Dennison and up to the, the baseball field. This is the other phase that would take us from Deerfield up to Dennison. And the purpose of it, the intent, is to help facilitate the folks, township residents, students, whomever, on that south side of the township so they can safely move north. And whether it's to intersect with existing pathway routes, other sidewalks, other pathway networks, whether it be the universities or the cities, or eventually pathways that we're hoping to get up as far as Mission Creek. So we have a bunch of people that live down there. It's a very dense area, students, workers, generally lower income, I'd say. So it, it's a method to help them safely get, get north. The project in total costs four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. These are rounded numbers. CMU is contributing in kind and also, at the end of the day, real money in the amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. That leaves an outstanding share to cover of three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. It is our intent to go to the, to make a grant application through the two percent program to help us fund a portion of that three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Last fall, we made an application for about one hundred and fifty thousand, I want to say, and that was denied or it wasn't approved. So we'll go back in the spring and ask for that. In the event that we don't prevail in our application this time, this commitment is being made so that we can tell CMU whether or not to proceed or not. There is already in our budget approximately one hundred and seventy-five thousand of this three thirty-two budgeted specifically for this project. But one hundred and seventy-five thousand is not three hundred and thirty-two. Our hope and our financing plan is that we budgeted one seventy-five. We need three thirty-two. The difference is going to be a two percent application. However, if we don't receive that, then this commitment ends up being three hundred and thirty-two thousand. We do have nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars budgeted for sidewalks, township-wide. Of that, I've mentioned the one seventy-five already. So there's still eight hundred and maybe it's seven hundred and some thousands and some change that's available for other sidewalks that we're looking to work on in the township. The one that would fall off the board if we are not successful in the two percent grant is probably at this point the work that we continue to try to do on Broomfield and possibly Bluegrass because a lot of that work is not going to get done till we resolve the easement issue. So there's a lot of moving parts. The memo explained it. I tried to explain it here verbally. So that's what we're trying to do, continue to complete pathways throughout the community in partnerships with various partners, CMU, Tribe, what have you, all designed to help increase our non-motorized accessibility to the community. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Trustee Bills?
I have a comment. This is a much-needed pathway. And I would be, even if we didn't get the two percent, I'd be willing to vote ARPA funds for this too. So I'm just saying that. But I think it's a great project. It has to be done. It needs to be done. And it's going to be part of our appeal to people that might want to move to this area.
I, I would support your comments and just add in the history of Crawford Road as well. We had a death of one of our residents because there's no shoulders on Crawford Road. We've looked, years ago, we looked at trying to provide pathways along Crawford Road because of the logistics that are there. The costs were enormous. Let me put it that way. And part of this, part that was partially two percent funded early, that's shown on our map, was part of the solution to that was we may not be able to easily put pathways on Crawford at this time, but we can at least provide pathways from the south end here to the north end, hopefully keeping people off those short shoulders on Crawford. And so this kind of completes that, and so I'm very supportive of it. I just wanted to add to your comments.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the commitment to Central Michigan University for the funding of up to three hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty cents to support construction of an eight-foot-wide asphalt pathway with the lighting and security improvements from Deerfield, Deerfield Road north to Dennison Drive to complete phase two of the collaborative effort with CMU to establish a safe pedestrian connection for township residents in the student and workforce housing south of Deerfield Road to the CMU campus area.
Support.
Motion by Cody, support by Bills. Further discussion? Seeing none? I always look at you to see if you want to do roll call because any of us can call roll call. All in favor of the motion to approve our commitment of funding of three hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty cents to partner with CMU on this pathway? Say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to item eleven D on our agenda. Discussion regarding making sure administration has the support they need regarding applications for grants. And I guess at this point, Trustee Bills was kind of, forgive the term, instigator on getting this on the agenda, so I'd like to let you have the floor and begin this discussion if you're prepared.
I'm not prepared.
Okay. Well, you want me to speak?
Yes.
All right. And correct me if I mischaracterize you tonight at all. But what I've, what I've heard from some of our board members is a desire to make sure that our, the administration, the organization itself has the support it needs to pursue grants where they make sense to do so, whether that be through employee-based or contract-based, whatever it is. I think the question before the board is how important is it that we make a statement that we're supportive of this and are willing to put tax dollars behind it to help our organization if they feel the need? Is that a reasonable way to put it?
Yes.
And so I don't have a lot to offer on it. I did, sorry.
One thing I would like to make sure is that we're offering the support, but we also got to make sure we recognize the capacity for staff. You know, as I've been thinking more about it and as I'm going through more grants in my daytime job, you know, sometimes the grant application itself is the easy part. It's all the reporting and all the financial and everything else that you have to do on a monthly, quarterly basis. So I would just make sure that as we go into this discussion that, yes, let's go for some of the easy grants or some of the ones that are out there, but we also got to make sure we're cognizant of what the manager and his team can do as far as the reporting stuff on it as well. So because the last thing we'd want to do is get a grant and then not do something on the reporting side. And then you got this ugly little black check next to the Union Township name after that, and so that's what you don't want to do. Plus, you don't want to overwhelm the staff on the reporting side of it. So we got to, as we have this discussion, I really like the idea of the grants and stuff, but we want to make sure that we give the internal support after the grant is received as well.
And I think, think the way I looked at it, because, because I agree with you a hundred percent. The way I looked at it was more making a statement to our administration that if you feel the need, you have an opportunity for a grant, but you don't have the resources in-house to manage that, whether it be on the front end, back end, or both. But you, you think it's the right call, that you have the authority through budgeting.
Yes.
We'll budget money so that you have the authority to contract someone to help you with that process. Because I, I agree that we don't want to bottleneck our own day-to-day operations just because we're going after a fifty thousand dollar grant, right?
Right. But I would definitely like the budget, you know, having some mechanism in the budget that allows the manager to utilize that for a grant that he feels he can comfortably, you know, maintain and, you know, do the reporting on.
I like that.
Yeah.
I, 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 would that be helpful? Mr. Stuldryer, in that respect, to know that you see an opportunity and it's the right opportunity, maybe your staff's overwhelmed. Would that help you to say, hey, this is worth going after? The board has given me permission to, would that?
That, that would be helpful, and it, and it would be appreciated as well. I, I don't, the township is, I would say, fairly active in the grant world. We can get into definitions and some of those kind of things, but it wasn't. But maybe a month or two ago that the board approved a grant agreement with the state in the amount of, I want to say, seventy-seven thousand dollars. It's state money, but it's a grant. And we had to apply for it. We'll have to administer it. We'll have to report on it. The two percent activity, that's grant money. The clerk, a couple of years ago, sought and then applied and then was awarded grant money to buy a high-speed absentee voter tabulator. Most of our grant, grant activity, I think, has been historically in the water and sewer area. And that there, and to Trustee Smith's point, there are capacity limitations. And, you know, I think I've said to this board before, you could get a hundred million dollars dumped on you tomorrow, but you couldn't spend it because, you know, we don't have the capacity to spend it. I think if, if, kind of what I'm hearing and maybe what we're leading to is if the administration brought back a budget amendment for some amount of money, presumably it'd be over ten thousand dollars because otherwise I could approve it without...
And who could you find for less than ten thousand dollars?
That was going to be my next question. What kind of budget would you like to have?
That there would be funding available for, to utilize the services of, for instance, Gordy Frazier. They do a lot of grant, they're, they're looking for grants for their clients. And it's not only in the water and sewer areas, in any of the public sector area, which could include... sidewalks, bridges, roads, you know, you name it. So that, having that funding available might make, create opportunities where in shorter periods of time, there could be identification of funding and application creation and then submittal by using some additional resources. I don't think it makes much sense to hire a full-time grant writer. But having some funding available to pay an outside entity to assist us, I can see benefit to that.
So e- even in this case where, I'm sorry, you were done?
Yeah.
E- even in the case where you might identify something like that and decide to bring in someone to help, that's still putting additional drain on low, internal capacity, because they've got to assist those that are doing the grant writing. So I mean, there's
The reality of the grant process is you need a project, unless you have one shovel ready already, but you need to have a project identified. And it's more than just a narrative. You have to have done a certain amount of preliminary work so that you can present rational budgets in the grant application, often supported with design work, you know, drawings and some specificity. And that is going to come from the departments within the organization. And so we, to your point, we have to support that activity. One of the, I think synergies that gets created or that could be created by using somebody like Gordy Frazier, they will often have a lot of the data already. So that will, can speed things up. So they may need to, they would need to come to us, but maybe not for as much as some other company.
Spark Grant, for example.
Yeah.
Trustee Bills?
So, I know I'm beating this dead horse, but the Spark Grant program did not even award the whole 15 million. So I don't know if people just didn't get their applications in or not, but I know that the city of Mount Pleasant did not apply for that. Or at least it doesn't look like they did for the first round. But they had $15 million that were awarded in February to 21 projects. And then there's another $50 million that can be awarded to projects just like the pathway we just approved, just like the one with fitness project, and just like the pathway that's going north to the school and the dog park. So I think, I don't know, I think, pretty sure some of the engineering's been done on that, those projects. You know, and anyway, I think we really, this is not going to happen all the time. That's a lot of money. So I think we should be working on that.
So I'm going to try to boil down what I've heard from this board. Is that the response from our manager was that it would be helpful to have some flexibility when it comes to this. And we can aid that flexibility or make it realize that flexibility by providing some additional funding for that. Would it be reasonable to state that this board is, would want to ask our manager to come back with a recommendation for a budget amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that clear enough?
Crystal. But it does not obligate him to go for any particular grant. It just gives him that flexibility.
Right.
To that.
Correct.
Correct.
That's much appreciated. It is crystal clear.
Awesome. We good?
Yep.
Thank you. That was a good discussion. I'm glad.
Excellent.
You were prepared.
All right. That brings us to our policy governance items, 11E on the agenda. Policy Governance 2.2, treating the staff. This is from the organization's perspective. So with that, I'm going to ask our manager to introduce this one.
Thank you. And the report on Policy 2.2, Treatment of Staff, there's a report on that that begins on page 82 of your agenda packet. This would, excuse me, normally been in front of you in February, but our, because we do these in the second meeting of the month. But that meeting was canceled due to the weather. This is an annual review. I'll read the top level policy wording itself. There's about five subsections that I won't read. You, you can, you have those in front of you. But it states, "With respect to the treatment of paid and volunteer staff, township management may not cause or allow conditions which are unfair, undignified, disorganized, unclear, or violate collective bargaining agreements." There's some additional limitations that are enumerated in Policy, Sub-Policy 2.2.1 through 2.2.5 that deal with maybe specific parts of the higher-level reading. I interpret that to mean that the township management staff will operate with written personnel policies that are available to staff that are clear, that deal with the effective handling of grievances, that there's protections to staff if they feel that poli- that certain policies are being violated, that, that the staff feels comfortable in bringing those forward without retro, without any sort of retribution. The policy discusses, to some degree, nepotism. We want to stay away from that. And that there is not gross preferential treatment towards different staff members. So that's, that's how I interpret this policy. And I, I justify that with by recognizing that the use of written policies are, are better required. We have collective bargaining agreements which legally should be followed and are followed. And that, and, and also in regard to this policy and treatment of staff, there's, it, it speaks to being able to fill in when needed. So there's some staff cross-training requirements in this. The data, I have some data for you on page 83 and 84. Collective bargaining agreements are here too. There hasn't been a, agreements filed at any, at any level for a number of years. We tried to work collectively and collaboratively with staff during the COVID period. And we were able to create additional sick leave banks that were COVID-specific so that if somebody, you know, no fault of their own came down with COVID, they weren't having to use their own sick bank for that. We were able to, to come to agreement on that. We do provide, I think, a fair amount, more than a fair amount of training opportunities to, to paid staff, to volunteer staff, whether it's planning commission member, a board review member, whatnot. We do encourage those board members to attend. They do attend. And then in some cases, they're required to attend training by state statutes such as board review members every two years. We do a lot of training with our back office software, the BSNA, so that we're, we are using that. And we, we're, every day, every month, every year, we're using that more and more to its fullest capacity. And, and that comes with, with training. There's a, we have 15 or so folks over in the water and sewer area. They're all cross-trained. They're all, they all have minimum licenses for their jobs. Most of them have additional licensing for their, for their own career development. It helps the township. We provide premium pay if they receive licensing certifications above what's minimum required. And that all is, allows us to be flexible in the deployment of staff, which ultimately is benefiting all the, all the residents. There is a report in the packet that compares last year's actual training dollars to this year's budgeted training dollars. That's a fair amount of money. And it's, it's very satisfying to, to, to know that there's a, that at the board level, at the policymaking level, that, that training of staff and volunteers is, is important. There's recognition that it benefits us all. I hold bi-weekly staff meetings with the senior staff. I also hold one-on-one meetings with each of those staff members so that communication is happening, that there's opportunity for dialogue and debate and clarity in that communication as well. All those opportunities exist. I will say that our personnel and administrative policy document needs updating. It's needed updating for a couple of years. I keep saying that I'm going to do that this year, or that's going to get done. It still isn't done. But it's recognized that it, it needs to occur. And I think we can improve some of our cross-training amongst some front office staff. You have building department-related questions, assessing property tax-related. With a little bit of training, I think we could help the folks up front answer questions that then would prevent them from having to send the caller back to an individual that may be out in the field or, you know, not available right at that time. So with all that being said, it's my opinion that the administration is in compliance with Policy 2.2. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or anything before we move on?
No, I'd just like to say that I appreciate the details the manager gives to show compliance. That's very, that's, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I, I want to lift up the premium pay. I mean, that, that's kind of a new tool in the toolbox that's encouraging what we all want, which is better educated, well-rounded staff that can step in and do another job if they have to. Or be better at the job they do. All right. With that, we are reviewing this late. What was the report submitted on time?
It was.
Do you feel the manager's interpretation is laid out?
Yes.
Yes.
And this is the most important part often of our review. One, do we agree with the data that supports it for compliance? But secondly, is the interpretation what we want to see, what we expect from how our policy is written?
Yes.
Do you feel the interpretation addresses all aspects of the policy?
Yes.
Yes.
I do too. And I don't know how long the cross-training's been in there. I don't remember when that was added, but I love to see the cross-training that we, we have now, even for your spot.
I think it's essential for any
Sure. It is. But it's, it's, it's at a level that it's continued to be elevated as a priority, and that's awesome. So would you agree that we're in compliance? Does the data show that? Do you feel we are? Any comments on that?
Well, the manager said he's not. So I'm going to go with a no.
What's that?
The manager said he's not in compliance all the way. So, you know.
I would say, I would say so because the manager recognizes, there's some work to be done. And I, when Mark says there's, sorry, when the manager says there's work to be done, he does the work. So I, I, I mean, I'm
I'm just reading what the report says.
I understand.
That's fine.
Fair enough. I just, I know he's going to do it.
Yeah.
Him and his staff will sit down and get it taken care of.
Yep.
We all good?
Yeah.
All right. With that, we'll move on to 11F. This is more our wheelhouse. This is again, Policy Governance 3.2, Board Job Description. And I will admit, I struggled with this one a little bit. But I'm sure you've all taken the opportunity to read this, essentially for the public that may not have a packet in front of them. Basically outlines specific job outputs of the board, how we're an informed agent of the ownership and how we ensure organizational performance, how we interact a little bit with the organization. And it has a list of bullet items on what our policy says that we're supposed to be living on too. So with that, we'll kind of go through it and review it. Did you feel we were in compliance or not? And if not, I'd love to know why not.
You just started, so you don't know yet.
What's that?
I said, you just started, so you don't know yet. Well, I mean, I think we're fairly in compliance, but at the same time, since I've been here, I don't see any formal, you know, reaching out to the community. I know there's a survey budgeted, but for two years, it hasn't. I haven't had a formal situation where we've actually tried to link with the consumer or the owner. So that's all I'm going to say on that.
One thing I would like to point out for me is that, you know, you know, after being here when this was created and stuff, and then stepping back and kind of relooking back at it, it kind of gives you this whole fresh view of it. And where I see on 3.2.2.1 ends, and I know we're going to be discussing ends in particular, the global ends and stuff like that at a separate meeting and stuff, and it just like, as I look through them all, there's just so many. And I'm not saying that, you know, it's just really hard to determine the priority when there's so many global ends. And I'm not saying we got to get rid of them, but it just like, it just seems like it's, to me, that was always the toughest when I reexamine this document again, is it just seems, it, it's just, I don't want to say confusing, but it's like, okay, what is the board's priority this year? And then is it the same priority for next year? And I know it's all done through the budget process, but maybe when we have that as a discussion, that we just kind of think, are these still all relevant to what we're looking for? Or could they be kind of condensed or, you know, emphasized in a different way or something like that? I'm just kind of throwing that out there as the new member.
I, I think the tendency, and it's natural, is you come up with a new end, but, but you don't rotate something off. And I think it was our discussion last year, it was kind of looking at one item like that. And suggested maybe rolling it off. And I think we didn't, but you're right. I like your comment about combining. If you can put under a bigger umbrella, sometimes you can simplify the language to cover several items.
And it gives more flexibility to the manager on, you know, what that means and stuff like that, instead of like very narrowly defined sometimes. So.
So on the comment on linkage, I told you I, I struggled a little bit where I introduced it that way. And that's the piece that I, I struggled on a little bit, because we've had discussions about that. Should we do social media? Do we need a newsletter? I mean, there are a lot of ways in which we can create linkage to ownership. And I really have reservations about social media. And maybe that's more personal. Like I've stopped using Facebook, for example, right? But, which was a personal choice, but I'm not sure as an organization how fruitful that really is, right? I do know I enjoy the, the city's news I do know I enjoy the, the city's newsletter. My business is in the city, so I get the newsletter, um, continually. The one concern I had about that playing devil's advocate is the resources to do that. We do mail out taxes twice a year. We could include it in that and not have additional postage, but who's doing the putting together of the newsletter, right?
Yeah.
Um, and I'm not saying we don't do it, I'm just, that's my concern in that avenue. But it would be a great way to reach out and say, "Here's what the township's been doing the last six months. We put in sidewalks on Remus here." I mean, uh, I mean,
Yeah.
Lift that kinda stuff up and tell what's coming in the next six months. But as I'm going through this thought process that I just regurgitated to you, I thought about my own experiences with ownership. And this is, you know, I didn't sit here as supervisor before. I was a trustee and I, I had a lot of interaction as a trustee with the community, but as a supervisor, I tend to communicate a lot more with people in our community in a slightly different way. I don't know how to even really explain that. I, I think it's just because of the office. I'm in certain situations, maybe that, um, those things happen. And because of the title, whether it's, i- it is, um, reasonable to, to put it on that title or not, some people look to me, and I don't like acting alone, because I don't have power by myself. I can only reflect the board's message, right? What we've decided. But what I do interact with a lot is the management team and our manager. And so I do feel like I have gotten much better at being the conduit between some of our ownership and communicating with our manager. An issue came up today that I called Mark up and, excuse me, our manager, uh, and said, "Hey, I got this email from someone in the community. I need, fill me in on what's been going on, because they've been communicating with staff. And I don't wanna jump in the middle and screw this, screw this up for the staff, right? So I need to make sure that I'm messaging correctly for the organization and for the board when I do this." And I, and I've really worked at that. And so I guess my point with this is each of us out in the community have that linkage. It is not an intentional thing like newsletter, but we do have a responsibility when the community to communicate, reach out, ask people for stuff. So all I'm doing is re-encouraging that type of interaction, and I'm not saying that we don't do that already.
I'd like to, and I, and I've mentioned this before, and I, we can get better at the linkage. But we took a huge stride when we put this together. Now, not everybody has access to a computer, but I would, I would say a large number of people have cellphones in our township that have the ability to sit in their home and partici- actually participate, not just watch, but participate. I think that's, I think that's huge, but I like the idea of being better. But I, but to me, that, I think we really knocked it out of the park, adding that feature, because it not only applies to here, it's going to apply to the planning commission, which I see being a huge benefit to our applicants when they maybe have a, uh, contractor, develop, uh, or developer that maybe not in Mount Pleasant, that can, doesn't have to drive down here to be part of Union Township. Ease, a little bit e- of an ease on our, our applicants, so I see that being, that was something we asked for in our ends, and we got it. So I'm, I'm, I like the idea that we're, we're talking about how to be better, but I wouldn't be so hard on ourselves. And that's huge right there. Anybody could sit in their lazy boy and sit back and watch, and if they really wanted to participate, they could raise their hand and, and be a part of our, our meeting, which I would, I encourage.
Well said. Yeah, and I wasn't trying to tear us down. I, I think there's, we always wanna improve, always wanna improve.
And I said "we," but really staff did all the work, so, you know. We talked about it. They actually, uh, put it to good use, so.
By the way, um, related to that, EDA is now using the, the hybrid meeting.
Fancy.
All right, I, I, I forget, forgive me. Um, did I ask the question whether or not you feel we're in compliance?
Yes.
Yes.
And we did? Okay, thank you. That, that's what got us on that discussion?
Yes.
Okay. So I think in that light, we've probably, uh, covered number two. And for the public, the number two is if we're not in strict compliance, um, what, what do we notice that gives us evidence we're not in compliance? And I think we also talked about ways we could improve the process, but I'll pause there again in case anybody would like to add more to that.
Nope.
And then the last question, uh, what do we need to learn or discuss in order to live by our policy more completely?
Continue to have discussions.
Yeah, and I might even, um.
Grant, grant writing was one of them. I mean, I think we, we stumbled on something, not we, but Connie helped us stumble on something that could potentially give, uh, Mr. Stooldryer, Manager Stooldryer and his staff some support if they see an opportunity. That's, that's helping our, our ownership. That's developing better linkage and making our community a better place.
Anything else? Thank you. All right, moving on. That brings us to item twelve on our agenda, extended public comment. Extended public comment is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. Uh, do we have anybody still in the virtual room? If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. Commissioner Angler, you have the floor.
Yes, Frank Angler, seventeen ninety-eight West River Road. Comments are not as a commissioner, but as a director for the Isabella Conservation District. You know, the weather's getting nice. Everybody's thinking spring, so the Conservation District pre-sale is still up to April third. So we still have time yet. I'd like to talk a little bit about that, because you know we've had a lot of thawing and freezing systems through this, this winter. It's been one of the strangest winter I've seen. A lot of the seed stock coming in was hard to find, and plus a bit, a lot of it was of poor quality, so we're expecting, probably we're gonna have to reject some loads, 'cause we always start getting the trees from Michigan, then we'll go out. But, uh, the quality is more important, and you never know the quality until they start arriving. So I apologize if there's some shortages for people that, uh, ordered trees, but until we actually see the quality. I'd rather have the quality standards met, instead of sending trees up that are not up to standard, so. We've had issues before as far as getting, but I got a feeling this year's gonna be really difficult, so. I just wanted, in case somebody wanted to get trees that's still available yet, so, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, I don't think I mentioned the time we started extended public comment. It was eight thirty-two. The floor is open for extended public comment. Seeing no one else coming forward, we'll close extended public comment at eight thirty-four P.M. That brings us to item thirteen, managers' comments. Mr. Stooldryer, you have the floor.
Thank you, and I have just a couple tonight. First, I wanna, um, say that I look forward to working with the new board. It is a new board. We have a new member. You may think it's the same board, but one person out of seven is a new board. And I, so I look forward to working with the new board and particularly welcoming Trustee Smith to the, to the board. The, um, assessor's position, I told you a while ago that, that, uh, we received notice of contract termination. We have filled that position, uh, pending receipt of some final pre-employment, uh, screening that we do. Uh, we had a, uh, applicant that was interviewed last week, and, um, the interview went very well. The, um, there's an interview team, staff members, uh, led by Sherri Teo. The assessing function is within the finance department. So I, I'm happy to report that, uh, still maybe a little fingers crossed, but we anticipate, uh, her starting at the beginning of May. So I'm pleased to report that.
Can I pa- pause you for one moment? As a W two, correct?
Yes, as a W two employee.
Thank you.
I do wanna mention, um, I, we've had before the board a couple times the, uh, issue or the item of, uh, the airport, uh, crew car. You may recall, we have an airport operations board that, uh, we're a member of. Rodney is our representative, Mr. Nanny, he was elected to that board's chair, uh, position. And I think it's, uh, I think he deserves a little bit of credit. I think it was his idea on the crew car. And there's a fair amount of funding that's been received to date, both by us and the city and other partners. So that crew car, uh, is gonna be able to operate and be maintained for the foreseeable future. And I did see a mock-up of the wrap that, um, is gonna go around that car. And I can't wait to see it out on the street. I don't wanna, it's not a done deal yet. They, I don't think they've actually, the board has approved, their board has approved that, but, uh, it, it'll be fun to see out there. So I wanted to mention that. And then finally, uh, we're, we're starting to gear up for the, uh, outdoor fitness center. That equipment's been stored in the barn. It'll be going up this spring as part of that. There's the artwork component of it, and what we're envisioning is, uh, we've had, uh, at least one meeting with Art Reach. But I think what we're kinda leaning towards is a process where there'll be a committee put together that will receive and review initial submissions from artists throughout the community. And that group would, uh, take what I hope to be a dozen or more, 'cause there is a five thousand dollar, uh, award to the winning artist. So I think we'll get a fair amount of, um, submittals to review. So that initial committee will look at a lot of, I hope, submittals and end up with three, four, five maybe, that will go to what I will describe as a final, uh, committee. And I think I'm gonna write this up in a, in a memo form and ask for board approval on this process. At the initial committee level, I see board of trustee representation on that. Would love to see you maybe on that. I think you'd be a great one for that.
All right.
And then Art Reach staff and, uh, some interdepartmental folks. And then in a final, in the final committee, I could envision maybe two board members, 'cause it is on our property. Representative from the CMU art department maybe is one of these. I don't wanna say this is a judge, but it's that type of thing, you know, group. They're gonna look at these things and go, "Which, you know, what, what should we do? Which one do we wanna do?" Art Reach representative, CMU representative, tribal representative, and by CMU, I mean the art department or whatever that might be called these days. So that's kind of the rough plan I see for, um, doing this outreach to the community, say, "Hey, we have an opportunity for a little bit of public art." You may recall that the platform of the fitness equipment, you know, is gonna be on the ground, on top of concrete. Then there's a wall of some, has a fair amount of mass to it. And that's where this artwork is gonna be. It might be thirty-eight square feet of space or something in that neighborhood. So it's not a small space. And it's gonna be on, it's gonna be in McDonald Park, facing Picker Road. So we wanna, wanna be deliberate about what we're presenting there, and I think, this is what I'm kinda starting to sort of feel in shape. And because it's on our property, I think I'm gonna wanna get some more formal, permission, if you will, from the board that that process is what we wanna, is, that you're okay with that process.
That sounds good.
Sounds good.
With that, uh, thank you for the opportunity. That's all I have.
I really like the idea. I know with, with the bridge that we have, um, that's kind of the gateway into the city across, uh, High Street for the railway. They had an issue with vandalism painting, basically.
Yeah.
And so they, they put on some special paint that I don't know how it prevents it, but it stayed clean. That would be my only concern, and I know we've talked about this artwork all along, that this would be part of it, is how do we make sure that it's not being, um, defaced, so. I don't, you don't need to answer that now, I just.
No, I know. But it's a good point, and one of the options may be a blank white board to encourage graffiti art. Let it happen. Paint it white again. Let people do it. I've seen those things. They're a blast.
That's right. Yeah, they do that.
Tables open.
That's awesome. Well, I think it'd be great for the local artists too.
Yeah, right. All right.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Any other questions for our manager?
No.
Uh, that moves us to final board member comment. Uh, I'll start over on my right with Trustee Thering.
I am all set this evening. Thank you, sir.
Clerk Cody.
No comment.
Uh, Trustee Smith.
Just want to, uh, say thank you to Mark for a very seamless onboarding process. I'm sorry, uh, Manager Stooldryer, uh, for a seamless onboarding process on getting the computer and getting all the materials that I needed. It was, um, never, I really had to wait for anything, and I just wanna thank him for, uh, getting me on-boarded so quickly.
Trustee Bills?
I would like to welcome Trustee Smith, and I really look forward to working with this new board also. Uh, one thing I wanted to just mention, because we recently discussed it, and I know we're gonna discuss it further, was that the clerk is overworked. The clerk's office is overworked. Uh, recently in the MTA email thingy that we get all the time, there was a really shocking one that came across. I just wanted to kinda discuss that for a second, or just bring it up. This little community of fifty-five hundred people had a clerk that did have office hours, and they paid her forty-two thousand dollars a year. And then all of a sudden, she decided, "I'm gonna get a full-time job and not do any more of that work." So she's only doing her statutory duties and still getting paid the forty-two thousand and, uh, not coming to work at all unless the township is closed. So I just wanted to just put that out there, because I think it's important that we might need to have a full-time deputy clerk, or at least add a lot more hours so that the clerk is not so overworked, because it, I think that it's scary for a township that small to have to bear that burden and then go out and hire somebody else full-time to work in the office. And I think, you know, we probably wanna think about really getting some more support for that office, but maybe just delineate, delineating what the duties are. That, and then, uh, have a great day.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanna lift up, make sure everybody saw the, uh, email from our manager regarding the, uh, excuse me, policy governance boot camp, May fourth and fifth. I, I, still working on my calendar for that. But if you didn't see it, there's an opportunity for our board members to, to go to that. Do you happen to know, I, and, and this is my fault for not looking yet, um, what the deadline is for registration?
I do not know.
Okay.
Specifically.
Often there's a discount for registering early. I'm a, I don't know if there is for this or not, but.
There is. Um, I'd have to look.
Okay. I, and I, it's my fault for not looking at that closely. Okay. Uh, and I, it's my fault for not looking at that closer. I didn't have this comment on my list tonight until our manager's report brought up the crew car, and, uh, the E D A was involved in a lot of discussions and helping make that a reality. And so I got to be part of that, being on the E D A board. And I never knew it was your idea.
Well, I, I won't claim one hundred percent credit, certainly, but I, I did help, help to birth the baby.
Well, I, I'm not surprised by that, and you're humble, um, but thank you. I, I do, I will say that the E D A board got a report on that at the last meeting. And correct me if I misstate anything, but, uh, at this point, the crew car is a huge success. It's getting used a lot. It's bringing the crews off the airport into our community, spending their money at a restaurant or movie theater. Who knows what they're doing during this time, but they are taking advantage of that crew car. Huge success, from what I gather. So with that, happy to entertain any motions to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Support.
Motion by Bills, support by Thering. All in favor to adjourn, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned.